Good afternoon and welcome to the work session and special session of Mayor and Council on July 25th, 73rd voting session. And this meeting is now called to order. And first up, favorite part or preliminary agenda review. All right, so at 7:00 PM, regular session, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have invocation by Councilmember Schindler, pledge to the flag, our announcements, rules of procedure, use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for August is August 1st, Tuesday, August 1st, work session at 4:00 PM, Tuesday, August 8th, work session at 4:00 PM, Tuesday, August 15th, work session at 4:00 PM, Tuesday, August 22nd will be our regular session at 7:00 PM, and Tuesday, August 29th, there is no meeting scheduled. We'll have citizen comments and we'll go over the minutes for June 6th, 13th, and June Consent agenda, consent agenda, consent agenda engineering, AutoCAD renewal subscription for physical year 23, DLT Solution LLC, Herndon, Virginia, $10,260.13. They've purchased a blue recycling totes and that's, rig it?
Rarick.
Rarick. Pacific Company, Los Angeles, California, $26,859 for human resources liability and property insurance, local government insurance trust, LGIT, Hanover, Maryland, $637,438. For public works, we have a 2020 John Deere ProGator sprayer, Finch Turf, Inc., Eldersburg, Maryland, $36,995. Ham rallying at City Park and Pangborn Park, Long Fence in...
Eimsville.
Eimsville, Maryland, $26,200. Replace roof at Fairgrounds Park concession stand, Advanced Construction LLC, Hegristown, Maryland, $20,450. Open container exemption for anniversary of hip hop, University Plaza, August 19th, 2023. For utilities, water, peerless pump rotating assembly, Schaefer, Choxwell, and Pow, Inc., Frederick, Maryland, $26,710. Water, IFIXGE Software Support Renewal, GE Digital LLC, San Roman, California, $10,741.79. Wastewater, affluent process analyzer, ChemScan, Inc., Lakeisha...
Oh, come on. Waukesha.
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 Good ending.
Waukesha.
Waukesha.
$87,263,000. Wastewater HVAC Systems, MS Johnson Company, Inc., Hegristown, Maryland, $72,390. Wastewater, US Filter Scrubber Chemicals, Source Technologies LLC, Lexington, Kentucky, $28,800. Wastewater replacement ballast and control cards for ultraviolet power station units. Beola Water Technology Treatment Solutions, USA, Inc., Leona, New Jersey, $14,882.35. Wastewater Pelletizer Operations Contract from July 1 to September 23, 2023, at Singrow?
Baltimore.
Senegro, Baltimore, Maryland, $420,000. Wastewater Pump Station 8 wet well lining change order number one, Pleasance Construction, Inc., Clarksburg, Maryland, $25,900. Unfinished business, approval of an ordinance, amendments to Chapter 60 of the city code for new business. We have introduction of annexation resolution, annexation of 17 through 13 through 17 Western Maryland Parkway, approval of the annexation plan, 13 through 17 Western Maryland Parkway, approval of a resolution, supplemental lease agreement number one with the state of Maryland, Department of Assessments and Taxation, SDOT for parking. Approval of a resolution, snow services contract, stop for that, snow services contract with Heartland Earthworks LLC, approval of memorandum of understanding with county commissioners for the 911 center, approval of compass partners contract, August 1, 2023 to June 30 of 2024, approval of lease holder extension, DLLR, approval of wastewater extension, TC Mid-Atlantic, approval to reimburse the Washington County Narcotics Task Force for a physical year 24, approval of purchase of equipment for citywide camera expansion, approval to apply for the BJAG CRO slash COAT OT grant, approval to accept the community program fund grant, approval to accept the Maryland Criminal Intelligence Network grant, approval of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, state and local physical recovery funds, SLFRF, nonprofit funding program. We'll have city administrator comments, mayor and council comments, and then adjourned.
Mayor, I'm not sure if Captain Weinstein wants to mention something about the grants?
Captain Weinstein?
Talk about the grant.
There's three of them on there.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Captain.
Good afternoon. We're actually, I think, going through, I think it's three grants. The first one was the King Street expansion to the citywide camera program grants, $185,000, $29 and $29.49. We think we presented this last month and what we're doing with that to expand it into the King Street area. Do we have any questions on that one specifically? That is the task force reimbursement. The CRO COAT grant, that is BJAG, and the CRO is the Community Resource Officer Program, which many of you are familiar with. We staffed it with four people years ago and due to attrition and other operational needs, we didn't staff anymore. So we're trying to staff it with overtime officers to address a lot of the community problems with overtime. And the COAT team is a, what's that stand for again? Crisis Outreach and Action Team. And what we're doing that is staffing it with members, again, to address the homelessness and vagrancy in the downtown and other neighborhoods that are being impacted by that.
What do you have right now with your part-time employees that we have talked about in the past?
I think we're waiting for HR review on that, I believe. I don't, I haven't contacted HR recently, but they were looking at the possibilities and I think reviewing the union if there'd be...
Yeah, I think that was your issue.
Do you have any kind of timeframe on the resolution?
I don't. I don't.
You guys have any questions?
Any questions? And I think we have one more, which was the community program fund grant, which is for $42,000. It'll be used for police community relations through outreach and education. And the final one is the Maryland Criminal Intelligence Network grant. This is just an extension of an annual grant that we've had, this changed name from ceasefire to emsen. That's $267,852. It's used to target high priority offenders within our community and focus on criminal networks. This non-match grant that we've been awarded annually for the last several years. Any questions?
Thank you. Next up, we have the 50th anniversary of hip hop celebration. We have Eric Deike, Director of Public Works, Amy Riley, our Recreation Coordinator, and Mr. Kalim Johnson, African-American Adjutant Association. Hi. Amy, are you coming up? Are you good? Okay.
She'll jump in as she's ready. We've got lots of empty seats up here for her.
Oh, and Jay.
Hi, Jay. Hi, Jay. Hey, hey. We appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. We do, as you know, we do lots and lots of events. And we've worked with Kalim and Jay on a number of events. Kalim has been mostly Freedom Fest at University Plaza, and so this year he's proposing an event on the 19th of August in the University Plaza, 50th Anniversary of Hip Hop Celebration. And so we thought we'd bring him here and give him an opportunity to talk about that if he has any questions regarding, because it's a new event, and we just want to be an opportunity for Mayor and Council to ask any questions about this. And for him then, Jay, to promote the event. I'll turn it over to Kalim and he can tell you more about it again.
Well, first I just want to address, you know, I got an email and I understand there's some uneasiness about the event. And there've been questions about maybe potential violence at Wheaton Parks. I want to address those things. You can't have alcohol at Wheaton Parks, so that's a non-discussion for that location. But also, if anybody says to me, I was robbed over there a few years ago, so I don't go over to that area, I have an obligation to find the best space for people that want to perform and they can be safe. So it's not a matter of them, that, those artists have performed at University Plaza before, they performed at the Maryland Theater before without problem. They were robbed before, a few years ago, and they don't want to be back in that space. And I completely understand that. So that's that. In regards to the uneasiness, I handed out that information to you guys specifically so you can see, I'm very strategic with my marketing and who I go after. It's 86% women, the age demographic, 35 to 44 is 36%, and then it's 45 to 54 is 53%. I don't target kids, I don't target young stuff. I want adults at my events, and that's why since I've been doing events for the last four years, you don't have any problems, because I go after grown people that want to have a good time and go home. So I hope that addressed it. And then also, I gave you the guys the information from Eventbrite, we only, they made 800 tickets available. Capacity is 1,500. The, we have vendors at 20, I dropped that down to 13, because we want to have a good time, we want to make sure that we keep everything manageable. So if we maxed it out, it'd look good, but it'd also be a lot to deal with. So just understanding that, I clipped that down to 800 where I think it'd be comfortable. That's just the attendees, you still have your participants, you have your vendors. So we might get to about 875, 900. And we have security. So the security guards are fully aware that everybody has to have a ticket getting in to manage it that way. So I got the email, I understood it, I feel like it was a blessing in disguise, because we put the tickets up for, made them available on Friday and they would go on by Sunday. So that lets me know if we never got a hold of that, if we never managed it, it was going to explode. So I was mad I got the email, but I was happy I got the email.
The email was from me, if there's any, just so you understand.
Yeah.
There was concerns expressed to me from a number of sources. I didn't want Kalim coming in here blind, I wanted him to, you know, understand what his concerns might be, so he could think about it and address them when he came to council. And so that's the email he's referring to.
And lastly, Jay was actually going to do an event before, a week before my event, he saw that I was doing mine, it took off, and so he reached out and we decided to collaborate to finish it out. So that's why he's here as well. So the event's going to be a good event, it's going to be positive, all artists are asked to submit their clean version of their music, there will be kids on hand, and we just plan on having a good time, we're going to clean up like we always do and get out of there.
I would say, certainly looking on the Facebook post to see 5,600 interested people, I mean, that, that was an obvious pause for concern. How you went about doing this, I wish everyone did, because the ability for you to go out and do an Eventbrite, tickets sold, were you capped at 800, that was fantastic how you did that. I think, I, I could see, I know I definitely was concerned if we had, now I know 5,000 people weren't going to show up, but even if 2,000 people showed up, that would be, I wouldn't want that to get to an unmanageable part, whether, you know, hip hop, country, I don't care who, what it is, that'd just be too much for University Plaza. And then knowing how you run events and, and the quality of those events, that is automatically going to generate a lot of people, so...
And sort of future, so you guys know, the numbers are going, is going to be high, interesting because our market be way beyond Hegristown.
Right.
So if they're interested, but they're in DC, the chances of them coming is probably about 5%.
Yeah.
But you're still, they're still going to say interested. But we do draw from those markets, but it's not a high number, the most of it's going to be around this area. But I still have to reach out to those markets, because there is a ceiling in this area.
I'd love to get to a point where you can't have it in University Plaza.
I agree.
I'd like to get it to where you're somewhere bigger.
Oh, Fairgrounds Park.
Fairgrounds Park, or yeah, somewhere like that'd be awesome.
I just need 30,000 and we can do that.
We're going to have a stadium down here to be able to do it too, so that'll help, that'll help a lot.
Yeah, but in all seriousness, I just hope that helped you guys to understand how we're doing it and why I was comfortable about how we were putting it together.
Kalim, I just thank you. I thank you for the way that you engage and collaborate with all of the people around Hegristown and that you utilize some of us that just have felt very, you know, not, not a part of the artist community as locals. And so I just thank you. I think that what you do and to even do a ticketed thing and to count and to kind of the way you pay close attention to your events, not only that, the safety concerns that you make sure, as a woman in the city, there's not a person that has made me more feel safe than you and your family and your wife. And so I just thank you for that. I thank you for your professionalism and I thank you for the way that you outreach, right? And I also know that there's, there's a lot of concerns that'd be around your events, but I appreciate the fact that you utilize the entire community to bring this together. And I love the fact that Jay and you have been able to come together, and instead of doing two different events where you're dividing where, you know, people go to this event or they go to this event versus they come together. And I wish that more people around the city of Hegristown would understand how important it is to work together in order to have great events for the entire city. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah.
This is great. Excited to have 800 feet on the street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day, guys. That's it.
Well, next up, we have 911 memorandum of understanding discussion. Oh, it's you, Scott.
Yep, just a short piece here, the Board of County Commissioners today approved the MOU that was sent over to them several months ago with, with just minor, minor wording modifications and also the addition of the 415,000 some odd change, last invoice that was received in May. Just to detail it, the parties agree that 1.21, $1,216,890 identified by the county will constitute the county's contribution to the Hegristown Sportsplex, aka Fieldhouse, with no money changing hands. Now, the city will pay the county the following amounts to satisfy the obligations and contributions to staffing the 911 center to be paid on July 1st of the fiscal year. This FY 24, $304,500, FY 25, $203,000, FY 26, $102,500. And after that payment, that obligation is satisfied and will no longer be paid by the city in any form. As I said, this is pretty much what we sent over to them several months ago, and I want to thank you all for your work with the county commissioners to come to this, to come to this negotiated agreement. I also want to thank former county administrator, John Martorano, who helped drive this, current interim administrator, Michelle Gordon, and one person I forgot in the memo, but probably was the, the one that took the most heat from everyone, was Kirk Downey when he was interim county administrator after Rob Slocum. Kirk, not only as the attorney, but also as the administrator. We went back and forth a lot on that and I appreciate Kirk for everything he did. So this will come back to you all as stated in preliminary agenda next week. To vote on it, should it be approved, we'll get that signed and we'll get that first payment out immediately and we will work to get the 1.2 into the funding for the Fieldhouse. Anything for me on that?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a Fieldhouse update, Michelle Evern, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this afternoon, I'm going to do a very brief, high-level update just on status overall of our project. And then John Whack, our partner with ESM, is going to come on August the 8th, and he's going to do a little bit more information, some timeframes that we were ironing out today, as well as review and review, review and let the body here look at some merchandising slash logo. So he has, I think, like three options, he's going to ask some input, and then hopeful that there'll be, his words were kind of flyby, or so that we can see a picture of what the drawings look like, what the renderings look like. So to this point, as of today, we've been through two phases of planning that are complete with ESM, when the architectural and construction drawings. Our developers agreement was executed and approved back February 28th regular session. We are continuing to work through the lease agreement and actually, we are down to just two exhibits needing final information, both parties, ESM, ESM attorneys, city staff, as well as city attorneys are good. So hopefully you will have that sooner than September, but no later than September. ESM applied for building permits on July 13th, so that's currently underway for review. A draft, RFP is being compiled and actually, several of us met today with John Whack and another from ESM. We are looking, hopefully, right now, date-wise, because it has to go through attorneys, both ESM as well as our city attorney, and we've got some final tweaks to do, final information to add, but we're hoping by the second week of August that everything would be ready to go for the bid to be put out for the construction, with a bid opening in the, in mid-September and the end of October for an award for the construction by this collective group. And then whenever, just last but not least, whenever John comes in in a couple of weeks in August, we are probably going to touch upon one of the things that we need to do is look at and decide how we wish to move forward with FFNE, basically the furniture, like the basketball court, the basketball nets, that type of thing, tables and chairs. It's not part of anything that's going in with our construction bid for our general contractor, but at the same time, we did not include it originally when we did our consulting agreement with ESM. So just thinking ahead, how we're going to want to do that? Do you want a separate bid? Can we look at utilizing ESM, who has the prior experience to kind of overtake that and do all the procurement? But again, more to come on that on August the 8th. Pretty much this afternoon, I'm here to talk about funding and I'm going to have you turn a page. I just want to do an overview before I get to the state capital grant process. So as of last week, confirmed funding sources, $500,000 in the 2022 state capital grant process, $3 million in the 2023 state of Maryland capital grant process. Now, in saying that, we are not yet approved. What happens is, I'll follow through that whole process, but the legislation was approved for those amounts. City of Hegristown, local funding, what we have remaining from, we have assigned money from our fiscal year 21 surplus, we still have 1.4 million of it, as well as what we recently just transferred was a million dollars, we did that just about a month ago. ESM, I have this in bold, has guaranteed 7 million in funding, that is going to be through the lease agreement that I'm talking about that will come back, and that's going to be, again, over the term of the lease, which right now is 20-year lease, and it is minimum, minimum guaranteed funding. ARPA funds, we set aside 700,000, which we know is not going to be enough to cover everything that is stormwater related for this project, but that's all we can utilize ARPA funding for this project. The county was kind enough to give us a $250,000 in hotel motel dollars. DHCD from the state of Maryland gave us a strategic demolition grant for 250,000, and then what Scott just mentioned, also thanking the county for their contribution by us redirecting our 911 funding from the last two fiscal years. So brings total funding to about 15.3, 15.4 million. And if our project is right around 24.6 to 24.7 million, that means we're still looking for about 9.3 million. Just in the middle, I have several things where I've listed where we sought other funding, either from a capital grant perspective or through a charitable foundation. If you look at all those sources where we were denied, that's another 15.2 million. So staff has been very proactive in trying to find and seek funds. And then last at the bottom, just, just as an overview, just kind of giving you a summary of everything that we have spent so far related to this project, and I'm including the cost of demolition, because some will say that was there, you paid to do it, so we need to include it. So we're about a million dollars in. Okay. All of that to say where we're at right now. Where we are right now is waiting to get approval through DGS and the Board of Public Works for our initial 2022 $500,000. So we started the paperwork and everything was sent to DGS and MHT back in November. MHT received the information, gave us approval back by December. DGS staff reviewed and sent back to us a grant agreement. So the city does not actually draft those agreements, those agreements are written by the state and Department of General Services at the point that everything is ready to go to the Board of Public Works. So we completed all that and this group and administration approved that in February of 2023. DGS then coordinates the approval on the Board of Public Works. So it was initially scheduled for May the 17th and it was pulled. As of last Thursday afternoon, DGS staff reached out to let us know that we definitely had to do a revised grant agreement. The original agreement literally stated in one of the items, the grant was a million dollars, and that is how it was approved. And it, it is a million dollars, and there was restrictive language in there that acknowledged that the first 500, we had to do certain things in order to meet it, to receive the first $500,000. The city knew we did not meet the, those restrictions and those deadlines. So in order to redo this, they changed one spot in the grant agreement so that it's no longer a million, it's 500,000.
Why didn't they just, why didn't they just withhold the 500,000 then? I mean, they could have proceeded with the other half.
I don't know.
In May.
So I, I have the original agreement attached for, for your reference, but yeah, so if you, if you look, the only thing that's going to be changed on your original document is on item number two, it literally states the grant is in $1 million, and then further down, you'll see the restriction on the 500,000. All they changed was that, $500,000. So that was one. The other thing that I had to do, which I did and returned immediately, which did not require approval, was in the actual application itself, so I struck through and made all the changes there, initial and sent back. They acknowledged receipt of that, I'm hoping that I'm good with the application. I will not say I'm 100% guaranteed that until I actually get a date back from them and we are on, back on the agenda. DGS staff said as of Friday or Thursday late, that until they had to sign agreement back from our body, they couldn't even begin to discuss getting us back with Board of Public Works. So I kind of last minute asked Scott to change what we were reviewing today, and in a special session later for, because we have to, we have a resolution, we did a motion, a motion and a resolution originally with the original grant agreement. So we need a motion, revised resolution to go with the revised grant agreement, so that tomorrow morning, we can make sure that they have the mayor's signature in place, so that they can then hopefully get us on the very next Board of Public Works agenda item. I got a...
When is the next one?
We're not getting on the one tomorrow.
We're not getting on the one tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
Because I didn't have the executed agreement back, which I didn't have to share until...
Right. Okay.
Aside from that, once the initial round is through, then we place the RFP, we go through a second round of Board of Public Works approval, and that is on our vendor selection, and I'm going to recommend that we do that simultaneously. Let, once we get the bid documents and everything back, and ESM and the city is good with who we're bringing back in October to this body, that we go ahead and send the paperwork at the same time, as soon as that decision is need, so that we can hopefully get through and get on the agenda to have the vendor selected, so that by the time we're ready to issue the notice to proceed, we're all back on track. As far as being back on track, if we can, and again, it's very aggressive, if we can get the RFP done by the second week of October, have the bid opening by the middle of September, have it approved and awarded by the end of October, and get quickly back through the Board of Public Works vendor selection approval process, hopefully, we could still have construction done by January of 2025, which is pushing out where we originally wished to be, and I'm sure John Wack will probably tell us in a couple of weeks, if this isn't done by January of 2025, he is going to recommend it's pushed out. He has told us from the beginning, ideally, it's a September through October is when you want these grant openings, and if we do it in the dead of winter, that it's just way better from a partnership and a business standpoint to do it later. So any questions about what we're being asked to do and revise the grant agreement?
I think we've been clear about that for some time. I mean, just for me, there's no, there's no way I'm going to sort of move on to the next item without making a couple of comments about that and about the detailed sheet of funding sources that you've laid out here. And I mean, I'll start with the easy one. I certainly appreciate the Board of County Commissioners recognizing that this isn't a City of Hagerstown project, you know, and the reality is, it's a venue space that kids and families from all across our county leave every day to other counties to utilize, whether it's Winchester, or Gaithersburg, or Westminster, or, you know, into lower Pennsylvania. That happens nonstop. And so, you know, I have every belief that every kid involved in the myriad of activities that this space can provide, from every part of this county, is going to be here in this community doing so every day of the week. That's just a reality. And so, you know, I think that it is critical to have that county buy-in that's going to create that success that's going to happen. I mean, I, you know, I grew up going to these places far away, you know, I see, you know, nieces and nephews that go to those places now. And the second thing, you know, is clearly, you know, the state, I think, has seen, you know, the importance of this type of project in this area, so that our kids are staying in this state, you know, to participate in those activities and not going, you know, up into Pennsylvania and down into West Virginia and Virginia, where they are going right now. And the reality is, you know, just as, you know, we say we're the hub city, we're going to draw from Cumberland, we're going to draw from Chambersburg and the Martinsburg and the entire sort of four-state area. I think that one of the hardest things we'll have at the end of the day, and when I say "we," I mean ESM that has steadfastly stayed in this ballgame with us from day one, is they're going to struggle sooner than later. I don't care what month you open it. The reality is, they're going to struggle to keep it affordable and available for all of the different types of activities that kids and families are going to want to do in this community. I mean, Frederick, you know, Frederick saw that, Westminster saw that, I mean, all of these spaces see that when this type of venue opens up. And so, you know, so I want to thank the governor's office and the state legislature for, you know, for continuing and putting their support behind it, and I would certainly be remiss if I did not mention delegate Grossman behind you for assisting exactly where it was needed, which is removing, you know, the unfortunate politics, you know, of the matter of delaying of funding, you know, to accomplish this very simple capital project. So thank you for doing that. It's good that we're getting that worked out. I have every faith that John and his crew and our staff will, you know, will expedite that timeframe once we do get to that point, because for all of the folks that are out there, you know, in that arena, I think we've said clearly, this is happening. You know, it's happening because it's good for this community, you know, it will be a draw for the area. And, you know, just the reflection of John almost from the very beginning saying, you know, we're going to pay taxes, you know what I mean? We're going to, you know, we're going to pay back a portion over time. And that amount, they have identified, has only went up at every step of the way of saying, we think this is going to be even more successful, we think it's going to be even more profitable, we're going to be able to pay exactly what our fair share of those obligations for, you know, creating this space and the city services that it require will need to absorb. And that's, that I think is a great thing. So appreciate staff's work on it. When folks, you know, say, and I think I have to say this now as well, when they say, you know, this is Chris's idea, this is Chris's project, you know, that's just not true, you know. Nine years ago, 11 years ago, I guess, now, you know, it was a question of what do we do if, you know, this doesn't exist here anymore, and it was simply, hey, here's an alternative, you know, let's not bury our heads in the sand, let's think of alternatives for this city space, and that just happened to be one of those viable alternatives. I have five children, and I say this all the time, none of them go to these places and play at these locations, so, you know, it doesn't benefit me directly in some personal, you know, prerogative manner, saying, you know, that I need this, you know, for my kids, you know, it just, it just isn't, it isn't that. I simply grew up going to these places and seeing, you know, their restaurants filled with families, you know, and their spaces. And even when we talked to the gentleman from Aberdeen, you know, several city administrators ago, I mean, one of the biggest things he said is, you know, thank God that Aberdeen has the youth-associated component to that minor league facility, because, you know, that's what fills our hotels and restaurants, and you need to look no further than the success that Mr. Kelbal's had with the softball in this community and the way that that fills our rooms and restaurants on a very underrated scale, so I'll do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, Yfty Downtown Gift Card for Main Street Program, Brittany Arias-Mendy, our community engagement officer.
Good evening. So I'm coming before you this evening with Yfty, which is a downtown gift card. Attached in your packet is just more information about that. To summarize, basically, it's a digital gift card, and we were looking for something that would, across-the-board, work with the point-of-sale systems for all of our merchants, restaurant, retail downtown. This does that. They had a booth at the National Main Street Conference, Brunswick, New Market, and several other, Sykesville, several other Main Street communities in the state of Maryland utilize this. There's no fee to the city. Basically, we enter into this contract, we say yes to them, they get us a website set up, so they set, they do all that themselves, and then we, I encourage all of the Main Street businesses to get registered. It is geographically restricted, so we set the parameters of where we want that to be. So if someone tries to use it somewhere else, it's not going to work. So that's kind of the uniqueness to it. Essentially, someone could purchase 50 gift cards if they wanted to. This is a great way for local businesses outside of the downtown area, for whether it's for the holiday season, birthday. Instead of buying a gift card to one specific restaurant, you could do a $100 gift card, and that person could come downtown and spend it at three different places. So it's just modernizing the gift card experience and getting us up to where we should be when it comes to merchants and how we're operating downtown.
I like it.
Any questions?
This is great, and it's not specific to any type of business, any business in the city limits could apply to it. Could apply to be part of this program.
Yes.
Will this apply to vendors that participate in the farmer's market?
I need to, I need to reach out. I've had that question, I haven't gotten the answer yet, but that is a good question. So I don't know the definite answer yet. I would think as long as the vendor would accept...
Right, electronic payment.
Yes, that it would be eligible, because what happens is, once you, once you sign up for the gift card, you get a digitized, basically, it looks like a digitized credit card, and then you just punch that into your system.
I would say almost all of them do, if not all of them, do electronic cards, so yeah.
Essentially, you know, MasterCard, right?
Yes.
It's great.
Awesome. All right, I'm still up.
So we have 2023 vintage markets, and there's Brittany again, our community engagement officer.
And then I'm inviting Jen from the Foundry pop-ups up, so...
Hi.
This is her baby, so she is introducing a new vintage market to downtown. I'll just let her speak for a few moments about it, and then we're coming before you because if this one is successful, the idea of potentially doing it monthly through November...
Through November.
Is just something that we would need your okay with.
Currently, we have 20 paid vendors already signed up. There are actually probably 20 more that have expressed interest, so hopefully, we can go forward and do them next month and invite all 40. I spaced it that they had two parking places per vendor, but we can kind of cut that down. I had overwhelming response. I was very surprised at the number of people who reached out to, that want to come downtown and participate, so.
What is a vintage market?
Well, we actually kind of changed the name now, which Brittany didn't know. We're going to change it to vintage and handmade. So I kind of opened it up that it could be handmade products, it could be direct sales, it could be antique borderline flea market, but not yard sale crap.
Like Etsy retailers?
In a way.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, so pretty, I mean, we have several founders from the...
I thought you said Etsy at first.
So we have 22 founders in the Foundry already, about six of them have signed up to be outside also, so I'm just trying to get people downtown to know the Foundry and to come in and shop.
And then this will be taking place in the Elizabeth Hager Center lot. And it's from 9:00 to 3:00. The first one is this Saturday, July 22nd. So if the Playhouse was having an event, normally theirs are in the evening, so it wouldn't interfere with their operations, with parking, so.
Here's a really dumb question.
No.
I'm just saying, well, I'm thinking of like inclement weather instances. I'm just curious if we could, if you could ever use like the first level of the parking deck, or the second level of the parking deck for that, so that the vendors have their stuff under roof.
I'll defer that to Eric Steinke.
That's a question for Eric.
I don't know.
I'm going to put it out there for the first one, it's rain or shine, and we'll go from there.
You're going to take the entire Elizabeth?
We're going to take the first, when you turn off of Potomac Street, we're going to take that, like first section, block, not the, like back to that first alley.
Where the electric vehicles...
Not that I'm surely not overwhelmed, but I mean, in case somebody...
And I haven't been here on Saturdays, working honestly, to watch how much they've been used.
I think this Saturday is a good trial run for that, so maybe if you can encourage, like keep at least one of those spaces clear, just in case. I mean, it's going to probably be blocked with water barricades.
True.
But if we see someone that is, needs to utilize that station, we can make a note for the next time, and maybe we push it back, starting from that station and move it back.
Yes.
That was, but you never know, but it is a point of discussion. So what are your thoughts about doing this monthly?
Yeah, I think that's great.
Doing it monthly. You'd be okay with it?
Let's say if you might not want to do it.
That is true. We may have nobody come shop, but hopefully, we have people, judging by the, just Facebook, I mean, there's over 400 said they're interested, which I know doesn't mean they're going to come, but that's encouraging to me, so.
And since you're already up there, do my job, and you can say what's...
Okay.
...what's happening this week.
Upcoming events this week, tomorrow, Wednesday, we have midweek music and market. So tomorrow's music, they're called the Wild Hymns. Their style is gypsy jazz. We'll be giving away free downtown Hagerstown water bottles. Music starts at 6:30, they go from 6:30 to 8:00. The artisan market, Beer Garden, food vendor will start at 5:00 PM, so we'll be in University Plaza from 5:00 to 8:00. We have Hub City Brewery there for the Beer Garden, Seasons Grill will be there for the food, and I think there's about nine artisan vendors set up. Thursday morning, we have Storytime at the Plaza, that is at 10:30, which will feature Bings and Pots, which is a U2 puppeteer duo, and they have a lot of fun kids' activities. We'll be doing it under the shade structure at University Plaza because it is hot out there. And then Thursday at 3:00, we'll be over 25 West Church Street for Farmer's Market. We're doing a bounce house, and we're giving away free Freeze Pops that day. So we're gearing this one more towards kids because it will probably be the last one before most kids go back to school. And then Watches and Whiskey, hosted by Minel Schmidt and Maryland Watch Works, so two downtown businesses. That will be Saturday and Sunday in Potomac Walk area. It's free to attend the watch area, it's $10 a ticket to get into the actual tasting, but there are several Maryland distillers that will be in there for that. And then the vintage market is happening Saturday as well. That's all for this week.
Nothing to do in Hagerstown.
Nothing to do.
Nothing at all.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Next up, we have annexation of 13 through 17 Western Maryland Parkway, Kathleen Marr, Director of Planning and Code Enforcement, and Anna Wu, our planner.
I guess it's just me. Okay, so 2 Western Maryland Parkway became, went into effect July 1st, and it's the annexation that was processed in 2022. We had pre-annexation agreements with this one, 13 and 17 Western Maryland Parkway, and it's two office buildings, so we'll be processing this annexation soon, whenever you guys decide. A little bit about the annexation, the area of the properties is around 10.59 acres. We're proposing IMU zoning because it's currently ORT in the county. It's in the city's MRGA, county's UGA, and state's PFA. Waste water will be by the city, water is provided by the city, and electric will be by Potomac Edison. Um, wastewater will be by the city, water's provided by the city, and electric will be by Potomac Edison. There's two streets with this one, two right-of-ways. Um, Western Maryland Parkway will be maintained by, um, State Highway and, State Highway, and, um, the county will maintain West Washington Street. Um, its assessed value on ESTAT is twenty-six point three-five million dollars as of July first. And, um, we brought this up to the Planning Commission last meeting on the twelfth, and they recommend the proposed zoning of IMU. Um, this will be brought to your next meeting at the regular session to hopefully approve the annexation plan and introduce the resolution. That's, that's all I have.
You guys have any questions? Yep, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Proposed Invest Hegertown P E P guideline update. And I have Chris Zimmerman, Economic Development Specialist. Hi, Chris.
So, we are here to, uh, provide a couple of proposals for updating the Invest Hegertown and, uh, partisan economic progress, uh, programs that the city offers, to try and respond to a lot of different market changes that happen, as well as make sure that we are updating our programs throughout, uh, to make sure that we pose any kind of questions or that developers might have or any other administrative sides of things. Uh, so writing down the list that I have provided. Number one, clarification that Pep funding, um, sorry, proposed clarification that Pep funding can be utilized after any and all local, state, federal, commercial rental assistance programs. Uh, the prior approval that we have received from Mayor Council was just specifically for a project restore. So this would just cover anything that happens in the future, if there is anything for that matter. Also that our city dollars come after those state or federal or county or, or any of those items. Proposed to expand the commercial tenant rental assistance Pep benefit to include storefronts for retail and restaurants. And once again, this would not be citywide. This would be for Pep-approved properties that go through that Pep level of redevelopment as well. A proposed increase of the total maximum commercial tenant rental assistance, uh, benefit incentive from the existing twenty-four thousand to a maximum of thirty thousand. That number has stayed at twenty-four thousand since the Pep program was first introduced, I believe in two thousand nine. So trying to make sure that we are addressing increases of rents that have happened throughout the years. Uh, proposed addition of a time limit of, uh, five years for commercial tenant rental assistance Pep benefit and the permit fee waivers for tenant fit-out after project completion. So we'll, essentially so we don't have a project that has been completed and has a couple of suites that are twelve years down the line, never utilized. So we're not still chasing after that one. The Pep program is meant to be an incentive to, um, essentially fill those spaces fast, and that's what we want to encourage to be still. Um, for Invest Hegertown City Center Grant and for Pep, um, their proposed requirement of a property code analysis and building permit for the entire building. It's a proposed proactive approach to ensuring that the entire building will be up to, uh, current code and that there's no confusion of work that needs to take place between the developer, ourselves, or contractors. Um, so we are addressing any kind of, uh, code questions or concerns upfront. Um, for Invest Hegertown, uh, City Center Grant, or sorry, Invest Hegertown in general, proposed requirement of walkthroughs of applicant properties with projects that are defined as in-progress, uh, with no more than fifteen percent of total work completed by cost, excluding contractor deposits at time of application for the proposed scope of work they're applying for. Um, also for Invest Hegertown, proposed change for the Invest Hegertown projects that are in progress. Uh, project would be, sorry, applicant would be required to demonstrate expenditures equal to the grant and required match to work that was completed within thirty days prior to the date of approval and the required date of completion. This would change the current, essentially ninety-day look-back period to a thirty-day look-back period, uh, prior to the date of review committee approval. For, uh, Invest Hegertown City Center Grant and Pep, uh, proposed requirement of providing a as-built drawings upon project completion. This will assist our planning code and review committee staff for, um, administrating, I'm sorry, administrative, administratively, um, handling those Pep benefits, make sure that we are, uh, doing everything correctly for them. For, also for Invest Hegertown City Center and Pep, um, clarification of core systems to include that all floors should be, uh, flat and non-trip, to make sure that there is no, um, A D A concerns on those as well. And then finally, for Invest Hegertown overall, um, proposed requirement that if an applicant is not the owner of the property, that we have a lease, um, document as a required attachment, so that applicants have to demonstrate that they are responsible for the expense and the scope of work being proposed to us. And then I can open up for any kind of questions or comments.
Congressman Asha definitely has a question.
I have a couple of questions. So, number five, proposed requirements of property code analysis and building permit for the entire building. That seems rather new. I want to understand, I'm assuming you have projects in process right now.
Right.
Does that apply to the projects that are in process right now? In other words, that, that jumped into this agreement without that existing?
No, so this would be for the, um, on the front, sorry, on the, for other projects that are going through, making sure that we have that in place, once again, to avoid any further confusions, as well as in the Pep agreement itself that a developer will sign, that we have that as a condition of the agreement that they have with the city versus, um, a document they have to tech, uh, check off the box.
So this doesn't apply to any project that's in the Pep application process right now? Or that's already received approval that may be.
Correct.
They're all grandfathered in.
Correct.
Okay. And that could be a big changer for somebody that already caught it, and then it's like, wait a second, now I gotta upgrade the whole building?
Exactly, but this is making sure that if someone is looking at taking on those larger development projects, that they understand with city staff, we can help identify any kind of concerns ahead of time.
What does it mean to the average applicant in number seven, reducing it from ninety days to thirty days?
It should give a higher incentive to make sure that they are applying on the front end of any application versus come to the review committee when they are ninety percent completed, for example. Um, so that we are having those award letters on file, um, prior to the, um, project itself beginning, rather than, alright, well, we brought this to the committee, now we have some other questions. Well, because we have to get clarification on one or two items, that has now taken out forty percent of their work, for example. We want to make sure that we are getting that approval letter ahead of time.
Okay. It just seemed like a big flexibility change. On, for, 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 for the applicant. Number nine, uh, you, you read that it states all floors shall be flat and non-trip, but then you said, shall be compliant with A D A. And to me, I read those as two different things. So are we talking about making sure that they're, they're, they're flat with no trip hazards? Are we talking about that it has to meet A D A?
Sorry, flat and no trip hazards. I use A D A as an example of that. Uh, so that someone is using a wheelchair, for example, there's no, um, divots or anything like that that might be a hazard.
Okay, so that's the actual language, not that the applicant has to meet all A D A requirements?
Right, A D A requirements would go by whatever current code is. Um, this is just making sure that there is, that the floor itself is flat. Uh, no divots, no unnecessary bombs, different things like that.
And number ten, are we accepting the lease as sort of like a, in lieu of an affidavit? Like, for me, I'm reading that and I say, okay, I'm the, I'm the tenant and I'm gonna take this on and here's my lease. I guess I would assume that much like a building permit, you'd want like an affidavit of ownership or affidavit from the owner that, that the owner has, like, checked off, yes, this tenant has my blessing to take on this task. Because I read the two different sentences and I'm like, okay, are you saying that they just got to give you the lease? And then that, that serves as the okay from the owner? Or are you saying that the okay from the owner has to be included in the lease?
So it's gonna be a, a couple of different things. So when it comes to Invest Hegertown applications already, we allow someone to apply as long as they have a lease or a letter of intent on, on hand, essentially. That lets us go ahead and say, yes, you're actually coming into that space and can work through everything. So that's the number one. The lease agreement aspect of it also includes, um, there's a lot of leases that include tenant improvement, uh, verbiage. So if a developer is, uh, proposing that they will take on sixty percent of those costs, that we're not, at the same time, attributing that to the tenant, um, who's making the, the grant application with us. So we're not over awarding them, uh, for example.
Kind of double-dipping.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Can I give you back to number five?
Yes.
Give me an example, like, what, what I'm thinking in my mind is, let's say the Doghouse put in for Pep. They don't own the building.
Right.
But moving forward from, from this time forward, in order to qualify for Pep, that entire building that was not under their control would have to be brought up to have code analysis and building permit for the entire building.
Right, and in review committee discussions, we looked at this as ninety-nine. Actually, to date, it's only been property owners who have applied for the Pep program because of the investment threshold that's required under it. For residential properties, it's one hundred thousand, for commercial properties, it's two hundred fifty thousand, and for mixed-use properties, it's two hundred thousand dollars worth of improvement to the property itself. Um, most tenants themselves are not taking on that level of investment, nor will they see, for example, the, um, grant back equal to taxes, uh, benefit that's under this or the water, uh, allocations that will come from the Pep, uh, program to begin with as well. Um, so we would imagine that it would be the pro, uh, property owner who would apply for it, versus the tenant themselves. And the, um, permit waivers and anything along those lines could still potentially come through with that too. We just want to make sure that we have that understanding that if a property owner is taking on this level of redevelopment, we are addressing all concerns. So there's nothing that's left out, uh, nothing that we find out six months out of the fact, oh, we did this, but not this. We want to make sure that that gets taken care of ahead of time. Uh, the Doghouse, for example, with their retail space, I cannot see them making that two hundred thousand dollar.
Okay, let's use a different example. Let's use seventy West Washington Street. If, if, if someone, if a building owner wanted to apply for the Pep program, they wanted to do the development stages in a building, he wouldn't be able to do that in like, starting at the first floor because he would have to bring everything, like, second, third, and fourth floors up to code before he could qualify for Pep for the build-out of the first floor, right?
Right, and with Pep benefits, it would not kick in till the end of project completion as well.
So he couldn't, so he couldn't centralize that and, and have Pep for the first floor and then, you'd make him do everything on the building before you would. Even though he doesn't have anybody for the second, third, and fourth floors, but he's got this big tenant that he can use Pep for the first floor and be able to build out.
And that's why we want to use Pep for as well, to be that incentive to bring everything into shell condition, at the very least. He doesn't have to have a tenant in hand for the second and third floor, but if he at least brings it to, uh, shell condition, we can help with those different programs that we have. And that will help with the.
You understand. This doesn't say shell condition. Like, for me, I just think of buildings downtown that are of a complex nature.
Oh, yeah.
And have been for, for decades, that, that wanting it to be immediately entirely compliant for, for the funding being offered is ambitious.
And in our existing, um, guidelines for Pep in Invest Hegertown City Center, it does include the shell, uh, shell condition verbiage.
So, I guess I'm just reading this differently than when you're saying shell condition.
So this is just in addition to what we already have in place for the guidelines. So the guidelines for both Pep and Invest Hegertown City Center already include the verbiage requiring that a property gets to that shell condition. Whether it is the, an office space that has not had a tenant in hand, they just need to bring it to some kind of shell condition so that someone else can finish that space. Or a retail, uh, space for that matter, they just have to bring it to that shell condition status as we have defined versus building out a full-on kitchen, for example, for a prospective tenant that they might not have for six months.
So you're saying currently that the regulations are that it has to be a shell, the way it stands, regardless of any addendums to this?
Correct.
And you're saying that now you're adding in the requirement the entire building comes up to code?
Correct.
You don't think that's gonna have some kind of deterrent for people who want to take on projects?
Well, in general, the Pep, the Pep benefits with both, uh, Pep as well as Enterprise Zone component that comes along with it as well, further incentivizes them to want to bring it to that full renovation status because of the deferred, um, sorry, I'm trying, uh, deferred property, uh, taxes that come in with it as well. Um, sorry, the proper name is escaping me at the moment. But this way, they can get all their tax benefits upfront versus staggering it throughout.
Okay, get that. But.
Getting tax benefit and having the, the, the level of capital that it would take.
Yeah, developments cost money. And, and, and sometimes they have to happen in stages in order to make money to move on to the next stage, you know what I mean? I mean, it's not.
Let's use the Y M C A as an example, right? That's a huge elephant, right? And I'm just thinking, the, the Y M C A was built over a number of eras with different buildings of different eras. You know what I mean? That could possibly be utilized in those stages. Man, to bring a building like that to use what I call the, the west wing of it, you know, in, into usable condition, so bringing the west wing of it into usable condition is probably much more, you know, much easier and less costly than, than the remainder of the space. And I feel like I'm, yeah, I feel like I'm being asked to weigh, like, it either all sits or, you know what I mean, or some of it gets over time, and that, that's a big.
Right, and I think that we can look at those white elephants as, under a more case-by-case basis. Depending as to what kind of development plan comes in force to us. But this would be more of a general plan overall. For example, when it comes to thirty-five East Washington Street, I'm gonna use, for example, if we have someone who comes to us with a Pep application or something like that, they wanted to convert that, um, building into a grocery store, for example. There is gonna be a large upfront cost for them to do that, but by bringing it all to current code, it reduces issues down the line as well, both for them as well as any kind of prospective tenants or customers, for that matter.
Was there any particular motivation to add as to why this was added? And, and if there was, generalize the situation, but this was put in, this was thought of and put in here for a reason.
Correct, so there have been other properties that have happened across the city, um, not just one or another, where level of work happened for one ticker floor or parts of a floor and did not address other code, um, issues at the time, which, had they all been taken care of at the same time, would have reduced frustrations on the developer's part, as well as staff, uh, time as well with getting that to that current standard. To make sure that, once again, there is no surprises or misunderstandings that a developer or contractor might have versus as our planning code or fire marshal or other review staff are trying to bring that building up to that level of development that we all want. I mean, I'm not.
I'm not a fan of number five at this point.
So, it may require. You know, the entirety of.
Strike that to stop.
Is it just number five?
Well, I mean, there's only three of us here, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Please.
The Pep program requires the entire building to brought up to code. The, the City Center Grant program is for whatever your, whatever parts of the building you're trying to do. But if you want to put the two together, Pep requires the building to be brought up to code. The challenge for us is when someone brings forward to us a building that's not a gut and rebuild, but one where they're just tinkering around a little bit, and that's happened twice. And so then you don't have the architect looking at the whole building at the beginning. Instead, they're coming in here, there, and everywhere, and we're having to tell them, but you know Pep is gonna require you, you have to bring air conditioning into the building. You have to bring sprinkler-y into the building. They haven't looked at it in the front end, so then it becomes this piecemeal. They haven't looked at it in the front end, so then it becomes this piecemeal nightmare throughout the course of the project. This would just have them, if they're gonna go for Pep, because you can't do Pep in layers, you would send Michelle to a psychiatric institute, because you have to, it's...
She'd only want...
You get it all the way, yeah.
It would take months for that.
You get the building all the way done, and then you do the tax grant back once. You don't do for twenty percent of the building now for five years, and then come back and do another twenty percent of the building for five years. It's, you get it to a certain state, and you do it all at once for five years.
So if I can clarify then, so Pep already requires this, you're saying, straightforward? In five, in parentheses, you have the Invest Hagerstown plus Pep, is this only in the situation where they're using both in conjunction? Is that, is that the only time that this number five change comes into play, is when they're using the two in, you know, in tandem?
Invest Hagerstown City Center already requires most of, if not all, of the Pep standards as well, such as tenant amenities. If you look at a building that needs to have data com, has to have fire suppression, HVAC, let's see, has to have washer and dryer in units, dishwasher, different things along those lines for the residential side of things. So all that verbiage for the Pep is all in City Center application already, too.
So what's the change, then? I'm sorry, I was just...
And, and most people who are applying for City Center Grant are also applying for the Pep program because of that level of investment. The level of investment, the minimum level of investment needed for City Center Grant is four hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is, for Pep is two hundred fifty thousand for a fully commercial building, for example.
Well, I think what they're doing with number five is trying to satisfy what Kathy just explained, that this would be a proactive approach to ensure the entire building is brought up to code and no confusion regarding required work takes place. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, I do. And it almost, like, almost makes sense.
Only in those instances where they're using both, right?
No, if they use Pep, period.
I got Pep, Pep already has, what I'm, I think what he's asking is, it's, a five only applies when you're using just Pep or both together.
So this would be proactive versus...
You're not adding it to Invest Hagerstown?
This is basically being proactive, saying, all right, well, we're going to do this project, after we get this signed, let's go ahead and have a meeting with, let's have a development meeting and understand everything that has to take place, versus we get to the inspection section and find out, oh, well, we forgot X, Y, and Z, let's get that taken care of now.
If somebody comes in and they want to do a project and they just want to do it through Pep, you're gonna say, this is the standard, right?
Correct.
If somebody says, I want to do a project, I want to use Invest Hagerstown and Pep, you're gonna say, this is the standard.
Correct.
If somebody comes in and says, I just want to use Invest Hagerstown, you're gonna say, that's not the standard. Correct?
Well, we did have a project that was Invest Hagerstown, and they were only planning to renovate two of the three floors, and that's what they got approved.
Right, so then this would not apply, number five?
You're not gonna apply five if it's just, if they're just asking for Invest Hagerstown, correct? Because that's what you're saying here. It's just a little confusing, I'm not quite sure what's changing.
I would think for Invest Hagerstown, it would be whatever's in the agreement would need to have the code analysis. Whatever floors you say you're going to use the two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for, that would, you would need to do the code analysis.
But that's not what this says.
Right, this says it for the entire property versus...
Yeah, because the two programs are, seem to be a little different in terms of the expectation.
And that's the question.
Right.
Would it apply?
Right, and, so, I just want to understand real quick from the body, is the body saying that they're okay with it being on the Pep standard but not Invest Hagerstown City Center?
I'm just saying, if this already exists, then it exists, and there shouldn't be an issue. If you're trying to now apply it to something else through this clarification, then I have an issue, because that isn't what this memo is saying. This doesn't say, I'm now going to apply it to Invest Hagerstown. This memo says, only in the instance where both are used in tandem does it apply, because it already applies...
In Pep.
In Pep.
It would be applied to the City Center and Pep, and/or situation.
So, I'm not interested in this applying to the Invest Hagerstown program if it doesn't already exist in the Invest Hagerstown program. But that's, I think that's a plain...
And maybe I'm, I'm a little confused, but let's just take, let's take the Hamilton as an example, the first floor, especially the first floor of the parcel in Jonathan, okay? Those are going to be separate businesses, okay, separate entities.
All right.
Within that building, okay? So they can use Invest Hagerstown, the tenant could use Invest Hagerstown funds for that to upgrade the space that they want to use.
Correct.
Pep standards don't apply to the Invest Hagerstown, right?
So, I guess that's where we get into the conversation with the citywide versus the citycenter grant. Citywide grant is great for tenant improvement projects, such as for small mom pop shop that goes into there, but that would not need to go to the citycenter grant requirements that those larger development projects would have. So, let's just say we have one tenant that took over all twenty, I'm just gonna say, took over twenty thousand square feet of that space. If they are applying for the citycenter grant at that time to take over that whole space and likely exceed that Pep minimum investment as well, if they are not applying for Pep for one reason or another, then we can have those conversations, of course, to encourage them to get to those standards that we want to see overall, too. But if they choose to just go for that citycenter project under this proposal, it would cover both under an and/or situation. And since the project is already, using that example for, it's already getting to a certain standard, it would not require it to go through another code analysis, for example. But this is just being, once again, proactive with the developer to address any kind of concerns before additional ones pop up.
Would you be all right if we struck five for now, or we just came back with five, maybe fared it out separately, a little different to...
Listen, I understand what, and I applaud what they're trying to do, I do. I just feel like if we create, and, you know, issues where there are no issues, okay, then that's gonna maybe stifle progress. And, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I, maybe if, yeah, maybe if you strike five and come back with some rewording that doesn't get confusing for, you know, everybody who's probably watching this, along with us, it may be helpful. But I don't, you know, I don't disagree that there has to be standards, I do not disagree with that, but I also know that, you know, if, if, if someone wants to take on a project and not, you know, I mean, we have some big buildings in downtown still that need redeveloped, and, you know, there's...
Yeah.
I'd rather make it easier than harder to make that happen. That's all I'm saying, and I'm...
And I agree. I'd love to see somebody come in and just fix the entirety of every building up, you know, I'd love to see that, but if it's a matter of, hey, we can fill this vacant storefront on the first floor, but they don't have the money right now to fix up the three stories of apartments above them, you know, to occupy them right now until the business takes off, then I'd hate to see someone not invest.
Right, and I completely understand that as well, but just once again, keeping in mind that the citycenter grant and Pep are there to encourage a higher level of redevelopment, too. If someone's just wanting to take over a storefront, we have different programs that can help with that. We also have fire suppression grants that can also help with the different project cost of development, too. We have a number of different programs that are not seeing at least fifty miles any way that you go that can assist with these property redevelopments that we want to see. The citycenter grant, once again, a minimum investment takes place of four hundred fifty thousand dollars to receive a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant versus a up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars plus for a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant as well. So this is by and far our largest city grant program that we have, and we only award essentially two per fiscal year because of how much of a financial commitment that we have with these projects and developers, so we can see things like the Masonic Tower or the Uptograph Building that we see already. So we want to encourage that level of redevelopment projects versus a subpar product as well. We want to make sure we are encouraging that level of development, we're not kicking the can down to a tenant who moves into the space and it is C quality at best.
So, let's do this, let's hold off, let's come back with number five and maybe spell that out a little bit in the document, because the other, the other two are gonna want to see this also. Spell this out a little differently, separate the three components.
We've had experiences that have led to number five, and it's hard to really help you understand without shining a bright light.
See, that's what, that's what, that's what I was trying to get to, too, because I can, I can name the one right off the top of my head. That causes, it causes frustration when, you know, money's been put in to redevelop, and then you find out that two floors above, you've got out-of-code, you know, things happening that ruin your business and, you know, that, without, you know...
I get it.
Getting the details, but...
Well, that's why I said under number five, you're saying, you know, entirety of code, and then I'm hearing, you know, shell ready, like, to me, you know, yeah, if we, if a business goes in, you certainly don't want to invest with that business and with that tenant and then reap the headache later that, you know, that the roof is leaking and has ruined sixty thousand algorithm improvements, that's one thing. But to say that business wants to go in and you have seven different electrical panels, right, that are in that building, and, you know, five of them are outdated, but he has to upgrade the two that runs that business, that, to me, is a different thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You see what I'm saying? So I don't want to add something that says, you gotta do...
All seven.
Right, the, right, all seven, when what you're doing is those two, if those five aren't of a condition or nature that is going to cause that harm to your operation of the bill, within the building.
Right.
Those are different things.
And at the same time, we do want to encourage, once again, to that Pep standard so that another business can go in there without spending a lot of savings, for example, to be able to utilize that space.
And that was the goal of the Pep program.
Right, yep.
Because we are, we're giving them free permits, we're giving them rent relief to get their first upper-floor tenants, and we're granting back a hundred percent of the property taxes for five years, and that's once they get the building to a certain condition, and that is bringing it up to code to at least the shell state.
But you said Pep already requires that.
It does, but the problem is if they don't do this code analysis upfront to know what's going to be required, then it's, it's, we've had experiences where permits come in for this unit, permits come in for that unit, but they haven't looked at what is the overall, what is needed to be done to bring in sprinklers for the entire building, what's needed to be done so that there's air for the entire building. And if you just do, and it's happened, where, because, when we created the program, we imagined it would be for buildings like Mulberry Lofts, which was, needed to be completely gutted and redone, but it's, we've started to get applicants where buildings are already occupied, but they're making them nicer. And so, per code, you don't have to bring them up to code, per Pep you do, because we want them to be a higher standard. And so then you get pushback from the architect saying, well, code doesn't require this, like, yeah, we know, but Pep, you are, you want our incentives, and in exchange, you have to do this much more.
But that already exist, what you said is that already exists in Pep, like, that's already a requirement of...
We're not changing Pep.
It's required, the problem is, they're not doing, in some instances, they're not having the architect look at the building in advance. If they have a building, like, say, the bead building, which had, the upper floors haven't been occupied in, you know, fifty years, they did, the architect looked at the whole building, but when you have a building where it's already occupied, you're just making it nicer, they're, they're not having the architect look at the whole thing, and so that they know what they have to do to meet Pep standards.
And then you're not in the inspection period and find out that X, Y, Z still needs to get taken care of, which delays it...
Right, they don't qualify for the Pep standards.
And then delays their project from the completion that they originally had and spend additional money.
You said that already, that's already required by Pep.
Right, that's under Pep itself, but the proposal of a code analysis, just taking care of that on the front end, goes wrong.
There she comes. I knew we'd get her to the table.
I think, I think Kathy kind of covered it, is that a code analysis is a tool that allows a developer to understand the code conditions upfront, so...
Which you already require via Pep, right? Which is already required in Pep, that, well, that's what you said.
And, that, there are core requirements, both in Invest Hagerstown City Center and in Pep, that require minimums, that the building be brought up to minimum standards, just in those two programs, and the language in both programs are identical. So, the items in that are that HVAC system is throughout, is to code, fire suppression system is to code, and a number of other requirements. So, the code analysis, the requirement of asking for a code analysis is simply saying, as soon as you get your approval letter, we ask that you engage an architect, engineer, a professional services company to do an analysis of the building, so you, as a developer, are informed of what the requirements of the building are.
So, and I'm gonna apologize to city staff right now, because it sounds like we're just misunderstanding the point of...
That's why, I'd love to come back, I'd like to sketch it out in written form and then bring it back to you.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like this already exists, and you're just trying to make people do this analysis to be aware of it, is that...
As an additional, and do it more on the front end, but engage with staff, so...
Because they can't, so they can't do the, do the shell to a certain extent, allow someone to move in there, and it's not all the way up to code, and they say they didn't know.
And the building shut down and their business is closed.
That's right, and I think that there needs to be some protections for people like that, that, you know, move into spaces, and they think that the whole shell of the building is up to code and ready, and they move in, they pay, and then they find out it's not up to code. So, I understand what you're saying.
It's like getting a code analysis report that helps guide your development project, and the cost of that, Kathy could say better than I, but it might be in the range of two to three thousand dollars to engage an architect to do that type of work.
And number five says, citycenter plus Pep, which is saying those two together need the proposed requirement for, and then it, and then it spells it out, it doesn't just say citycenter, it doesn't say, it says specifically those two together.
Our intent in writing the memo was that that policy number five, if you accept it, would be, apply to Invest Hagerstown City Center and also the Pep program.
When they're all together.
Whether it, whether someone applies for one or the other, or both.
That was part of them.
But it goes back to the original question.
But we'd be happy to sketch it all out.
Let's do that.
I'd love to do that.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, apart from number five, everything else is good to move forward. All right, thank you very much, and we will bring that to a future meeting with the guideline updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reviews, review of leaseholder, leasehold over extension for DLLR, economic development manager.
Good evening, here to review Maryland Department of Labor and Licensing Regulation. Currently leases about eleven thousand square feet located at Two-Six North Potomac at the Elizabeth Hager Center from the city. Department of General Services has requested an additional extension of a holdover request of their lease from January twenty-ninth of two thousand and seven. This would be the second holdover request, as the six-month term was from February first, two thousand twenty-three, which would expire July thirty-first, twenty-three. The new term would be from August first, twenty-three, through January thirty-first of twenty-four. Current rent is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars per year, or fifteen dollars a foot. The state and city are acting in good faith, and all rental payments are current with the state. The city is working with Department of General Services and Department of Labor and Licensing Regulation and the Division of Occupational Health to extend for an additional ten years, and the city has a signed letter of intent with the state from those two different agencies. The extension of the holdover will enable additional time to get the finalized drawings of proposed tenant improvements and the lease executed. In your packet is a state request from Department of General Services to, for the lease holdover, the holdover letter itself, as well as the motion packet from January thirty-first, twenty-three, for the last holdover extension, and the signed letter of intent. So looking for direction from this body on the extension for the holdover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One second.
Okay.
Thank you. Tax sale properties, neighborhood services manager.
Alright, so a topic that we've talked about several times here, but some new things that changed. So, tax sale properties has been something that has always caused a lot of blight in our community and just things are not being addressed with issues. One of which was a bill that was co-sponsored by Delegate Grossman here was passed by the General Assembly this year that gave municipalities a little bit more ability to act on these tax sale properties. The one thing being that with, with the bill that was passed gave the local jurisdiction, whether or not it be the city or county, to withhold properties from tax sale or to take over the foreclosure process if someone starts one. The thing that the city took initiative of this year was that we were going to withhold properties. And you know, I make these handouts and then I forget about them until I start talking about them all of a sudden. So. I can't do math, so that might work out on enough people. If not, then Chris needs to. So, so the one thing that we did was is that staff identified six properties. It's actually five parcels that were, or I'm sorry, six parcels, five structures that we decided to withhold from this tax sale. And I'll hand out that I gave you, these were the five that, properties that we withheld. They currently have structures on them. And the goal of, of this would be taking these properties and actually we have deemed them to be demolished. These properties are a blight in the community. They have definitely deterred from any value from any of the neighboring properties. And these are the ones that the city would want to, we withheld from the tax sale and our goal is to acquire these tax certificates, basically acquire them, demolish properties, and then use the CNS process then to find a developer to either build on it for investment or for homeownership possibilities. And then in addition to these five properties, or I'm sorry, five structures, six parcels, because the one property is two separate parcels, is also the 19 lots that were, that were not sold at tax sale. So there were 30 total property, well, there were 31 total properties not sold at tax sale. 30 of them were in the city of Hagerstown. Of those 30, 19 were actually just vacant land. There were no structures on those. And the city adopted an ordinance back in 2020, Chapter 224, to address these types of parcels. But one of the things is, is that we're always trying to find an end user before we actually acquire the property. And to be honest, that is a very challenging process for the city to be able to do is having someone already in line to acquire the vacant lot. So, the goal is, is that taking these 19 vacant lots and the city going ahead and acquiring these properties to hold on to these parcels and then finding the end user of it using the Chapter 224 that we've already adopted, whether or not it's going to the concurrent, contiguous property that's next door, that has the best reuse for it, depending how parcel lines are, where property owners can be inquired about it, or trying to sell the property through any type of CNS process. So, I gave you a list of 25 parcels that we have that are qualifying for this type of program here. Wanted to just touch on a couple of them real quick, especially the ones that we're looking to acquire those tax certificates and the properties to demolish them. Of course, we have 1012 Elizabeth Street that is a, has been delinquent with the city for 13 years on taxes, that is a property of frequent break-ins and as you can tell from the photo, is definitely in a significant state of blight. The other one being 661, 663 Pennsylvania Avenue, another one that is, that has been 13 years vacant with it. And the tax delinquent amounts that you're seeing on these, these are not for demolition. This is just solely for abatement work that the city has done, meaning that people are, were mowing the property or items are being dumped on the property and the city has to keep on removing them. So we have a significant amount of time and resources sent to those. 144 Mill Street, there's another one that's been delinquent for 12 years with the city. The tax amount due on it is not that much, but if you look at it, it was basically a garage. It was converted to a house many years ago. So it's, it's a very tiny parcel. Again, a frequent for most break-ins. 123, 125 East Lee Street, from the picture itself, you know, a couple boarded up windows on it, doesn't look that too bad, but we did a search warrant in the building a few years ago and the addition of the rear is falling away from the structure. It is approximately two to three inch gap at the roof line, starting to pull away from the structure. So it's, it's starting to have a significant structural failure. And that one's been delinquent for 11 years. And then the last one's 1820 Snyder, that is two separate parcels. It's only been delinquent with the city for two years because the property was in a very difficult estate situation. It finally got sold two years ago, but unfortunately, the person that acquired it has not done anything with it. As you can tell, it had a catastrophic fire at the property and it's just been sitting like that deteriorating continuously since the fire, which I forget the exact date, that was in the memo, but it, it's probably been about 10 years since that has been, or no, probably about eight years since that one had its catastrophic fire. So, again, with those, that would be acquiring these parcels and then demolishing those structures that sit on them, using the CNS process to find a repurpose for it. There are the 19 other lots that were listed here. Like I said, most of those, and I include that with the memo of reason why they're vacant lots, either the city demolished the property at one point in time in the past, or the owner did demolish it because of some sort of structural failure. The one I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is just the 901 Mount Etna Road. This one does have a structure on it and this is one that's been a blight that we, has had a lot of significant homeless break-ins, but it also, it does come with the dam that goes across the Antietam Creek. So there is a little bit of liability with that. I don't know if Scott wants to elaborate a little bit more. There's been a lot of city discussions with that particular parcel.
Yeah, we, Nancy's already contacted MDE about this and we believe we may be in a situation where we can get a grant that will cover not only the, whatever that building is there on the northwest side, but also the, the weir down below. We don't want to significantly impact the flow of the Antietam there. It wouldn't cause like a flooding situation or anything, but it would disrupt the flow of the water through there. So, MDE is looking at it because they said if you get rid of the dam, which is up, there's a weir up there at the top there by the bridge and then a dam down here at the bottom.
Don't we have a utility in that location as well?
We do not anymore, not along that parcel area. Those buildings there are not in use for anything now.
No, I mean a water line.
A water line. That water line would be over on this side. That is not part of that parcel.
So that should be the summary of them. I, I provide a lot of information in the memo about each parcel with the history with the code office here. If the city would move forward with acquisition of the vacant lots, the mayor council has approved a third-party abatement contractor where I've already talked to them, that they would mow the lots for that time period until we find an end user for those parcels. It would not have any impact on our public works department. It would just be that. And, and in all honesty, we're already mowing the lots as is. We, we are constantly maintaining. It's actually going to just reduce staff time that's associated with having to go out, neighborhood complaints. We just get it on a regular mowing schedule because we would, we might have to post the notices to go through the process. So, basically just seeking council's authorization to move forward with acquiring the tax sales and then going through the tax sale certificate process then to acquire the property.
Yes.
Yeah, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I think before we move off of this topic, I just want to thank Delegate Grossman, who's in the audience, for pushing the one of the two, you know, of these critical pieces of legislation that we've been looking for, for a number of years. We hope that the second one will, you know, gain more legs in the legislature, the next legislative session. I think there's this misnomer out there, you know, in the political landscape that what we're doing is sort of removing habitable, marketable housing, you know, out of the system. And that's just, these pictures, you know, speak volumes of how that's exactly not the case. And I'm hoping we go down to sort of sell this other piece of legislation again next year that we can use some of these examples to say, listen, you know, these are either structures that have been falling down for, for a decade or, you know, they're, they're vacant forest land that, you know, somebody's definitely complaining about that lives next to you, you know, on, on a regular basis. So, the quicker we can do this, you know, the better all of those neighbors and neighborhoods will be.
Alright. Can I have a motion to go into their 72nd voting session?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a resolution for revised grant agreement for Hagerstown Fieldhouse.
Mayor Harbaugh knew that the Marion City Council approve a resolution to authorize the execution of the attached revised grant agreement with the state of Maryland Board of Public Works for up to $500,000 grant for the Hagerstown Fieldhouse. This rescinds and replaces the motion approved by Marion City Council on March 28th of 2023.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. State administrator.
Since Brittany did my job for me, I have no comments.
Councilmember Brittany.
I'm good.
Councilmember Alshar.
I have one thing. And, you know, I try my best to sort of stay out of any comments associated with, you know, the school system, the public school system here, you know, in the county. You know, I have five kids of my own in it and, and for all intents and purposes, they generally do a great job, you know, of educating them. However, I did hear something odd from one of my daughters either yesterday or the day, I don't know. They just constantly talk and you, you pick up stuff when you can. But something about that parents of children that are going to Bispa were notified that if the kids going to Bispa want to participate in sports, and maybe it already exists, that they have to participate now at South High, starting next school year. Anyway, I tried to think to myself, one, that's kind of odd if that's the case. And two, you know, how does it relate to me in this position, right? You know, representing the city. And I, I'd got to thinking to myself, you know, that Bispa's not part of South High, you know, they're, they're two completely separate schools. So if it is the case.
Or Missburg or anything.
Right. It's its own high school.
It'd be like Tech High.
And I don't know how kids, I don't know how kids operate now that go to Bispa, whether they, they play for the sports, you know, that they want, if that's at their home school. But I just thought it was really odd if it is making a switch to South High because one, if I'm not mistaken, South is the most overcapacity school in the county, right? With tons of kids that are already participating in athletics at South High, which is a separate high school. And if that is the case, you know, then kids that live in this city, that go to South High, that may want to participate in those sports activities, you know, this is like, almost like a double chance for them to lose the ability to participate, right? You know, they're not volunteering to go to Bispa. They're at their home school. And so, you know, if, if a kid's put off a soccer team or off a football team or any other type of athletic, you know, activity at their school, you know, because of a participant that comes from an entirely separate high school, that would just seem really odd to me. And, and so, like I said, I try not to get involved in that, but when she said that to me, it just sort of struck me as, really? That doesn't sound like it makes sense. And the other thing is, you know, kids coming from all across this county are going to Bispa to, to expand upon their opportunities to exhibit the talents that they have, right? But they still, I'm sure, I'm sure want to have that friendship connectivity back to kids in their neighborhoods where they live, you know, in the communities that they reside in. And this is just one of those avenues to be able to get back, you know, and do that and continue to do that. And so I think that, that if that's the case, I would just hope that the school system would have a bit more conversation with the parents and the kids and give greater consideration to the impact it might have on South and why South was chosen, you know, specifically, if that is the case for it being done so.
I'll get, I'll get you, I'll get you an answer on that.
And again, as my kids say.
If they're a good athlete, they can go to South. If they're a bad athlete, they can go to North.
Yeah, I don't know.
Participate in high school sports or do they play in the, like, summer leagues and the travel ball and this kind of thing? See, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. And this is coming from a 14-year-old kid, so she, you know, she could have picked it up somewhere, you know, on, on Instagram or something. You know, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
You got a message.
Yeah, what's he?
Listen, the, the reason the government is advertise, you know, like, put out.
So this came out of, this came out of South, South Hagerstown. Beginning this fall, all student, man, it's blowing up now. All student athletes.
Darn you, Ruby.
Regardless, regardless of their school of residency, will participate in education-based athletics at South High if they choose to play a sport.
And I don't think that's right.
Yeah, but again.
But I think it has something to do with what Bispa is now being considered. It's being considered a program and not a school.
It's a high school.
And not a school.
It's a high school.
Okay, that, I think that has something to do.
And they have a home school.
We can get a clarification. If, if it was Tech High, I believe, you were still associated with your, with your home school, right? So, yeah. So that, that needs clarification. Unofficial channels.
Ruby was right. Don't say Ruby was right.
Ruby was right.
Strike that from the record, right?
Yeah. Future Councilman Alshar. Councilwoman Alshar.
There we go. Alright. Council, Councilmember Schindler.
Not much to add, just wanted to thank city staff. I know sometimes it's pretty thankless, especially with us up here giving you the 10th degree, but we've all got the same goal in mind and appreciate the hard work.
So I don't know where to start. I'll start with this. I think there's a, there's a misunderstanding of how to get my attention or to get me to respond, whatever type of issue it is. And I would just highly recommend that you call my phone, 240-313-8377. Send me an email. In that way, I am highly approachable. My superpower is absolutely listening. I'm not ignoring black, the black community, black businesses or any, or black leadership. I am not doing any of that. I love the complete, all of Hagerstown. And I believe that I am in this position to make sure that all 43,000 people plus and in this 12 square miles have the quality of life and have the city that they deserve and the services that they deserve. And so again, I just want to reiterate, I'm not non-approachable. I don't do gossip. I don't do facial, social media when it comes to addressing these types of things. I work a lot and, but I'm still approachable, reachable, and I would love to have any type of conversation with anyone. And on a more positive note, the property tour of the Up Degraff Building, which is the old bead building, that was amazing. I'm really, really excited about all the work that that family is putting into downtown Hagerstown. Some of the amenities that certain apartments will get just based off of them working on the building, making sure to honor the historic part of it. I think it's going to be really, really cool. Really excited about the view that the fourth floor will get. It's just amazing. I, I've just fell in love with the entire building. Also, I, congratulations to Urban Works for their grand opening last Wednesday. Actually, this leads me right into, I had three different meetings today, back to back, and all of them were very positive. The first one, I want to, I hope they don't mind me saying this, but Mr. Andrew Keller, he's 19 years old. And he developed an app called, app called Learn City, which is a financial literacy app that he's partnering with businesses within Hagerstown, where young people or older people, me, you, me or you and Bob, we could also get it. Where you can take these different, you can learn these different things about financial literacy. And then once you complete the test, you then get credits where it's a partnership with businesses. Say for instance, Cannon Coffee. Say you answer these questions, you get them right, now you have 100 credits to go to Cannon Coffee, which could buy you a coffee, which could buy you something. It costs the user nothing. And he also, what it does is it supplies data to the different businesses. So it's like a marketing thing. 19 years old, fantastic kid. I was just really, really. 19 years old, fantastic kid. I was just really, really impressed. I think that when we say, what are the young people doing? I think that we should, you know, really, really talk to people like Andrew Keller. I mean, I was blown away by him. And I'm really excited because I think that this app could be something that other places will want, and it's starting here. He has an office space in Urban Works. How incredible is that, that there's a 19-year-old in a space, in a co-op working space, working on an app about financial literacy? And when I asked him, why did you want to do that? He said, well, because there was people around me that were making decisions on money that weren't very smart. And I think that young people like that are just incredible. The next one I had was Ms. Leslie. She came and she talked about the condition of the community, and she talked about just seeing people running, like, running down the street as exercise, and not on the phone, or not scared, or any of that, people walking their dog. And she just thanked the city and us for, you know, addressing different things that were community-related. She said she lives up on Potomac Street. She said that she's seen a change. There's still some issues, there's, of course, but to be able to see people maneuvering. We talk about quality of life, we talk about being healthy, and now she's starting to see people out and about in the city doing healthy things. She was real, that was, that was a positive thing for me to hear. And so I wanted to share that with you guys. And then, also, Mr. Bill Yant, who's an author locally. I did not know that he was locally. He shared something on Facebook. I tapped in. I have his book. Did not know that he still lived here, right, not too far away. He came in today. We had a very nice meeting. And I just want to say that, community, it's so important to hear how, and how what we're doing in here is affecting the people out there. And I think a lot of times, we sit around and we talk about problems, and we talk about what's not happening, right? And there are great things, and there are people that are able to see that, and that just want to come in and say, oh, my gosh, I know it's not just you by yourself, but wow, I can see the change that's happening. Also, I want to thank Mr. Patrick Ryan at News Talk 103.7 FM. I actually have been doing Mayor on the Air every Wednesday morning at 8:40 since I got sworn into mayor. I really, really enjoy that, that segment, that I get to go and share whatever we talked about here. Again, somebody that, not always the same ideas, but being able to sit down, have conversations, be able to see each other's viewpoint differently, but still be able to care about the growth of this area. And I think that we need to do more of that. Thank you to Hagerstown Police Department, just for, just for being super, super on it. Captain Langston, I know, I send you messages, I make calls, and I just thank you. I thank you that you get dispatch out, you get someone in patrol, and that people are not saying, oh, they're just riding by, or police aren't doing anything, but now they're getting the feeling of an officer get out to talk to them. I don't think that wasn't happening. I just think that whenever it doesn't happen, that maybe we just circle back and make sure people feel heard and understood. So thank you, HPD. Yesterday, I gave, I gave Captain Langston an address, and I told him around the time it would start, and it was right on time, wasn't it, Captain? And so, thank you. Also, thank you, HPD, for the Citizens Police Academy. I was there yesterday. Ashley Roush, and Ashley Roush and Sarge that was leading that, it was phenomenal. I think they had nine participants. So I was able to participate in their icebreaker, which was like a speed, not dating, but like speed dating. I want y'all to think we were in there, like, you know, but getting to know. And so it was one minute talking, and you got to do it with everyone there. And I think that that was a powerful exercise. The people that are now taking this Citizen Police Academy were just there because they wanted to learn more about what police did, and they wanted to learn more about how they could help policing community. And I think that's phenomenal. Yep, that's it. And with that, we adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by Neighborhood Services Manager Paul Folk, a frequent visitor to Council Wrap. And we're talking about something today that you presented to Mayor and Council, that you've been down this road many, many times as it relates to these tax properties. And I feel like, in a way, just as an outside observer, there's just a lot of common sense that needs to come into play here. But many times, we can get in our own way, bigger government can get in the way of what we're attempting to achieve. So talk about a little, on the front of the way that things have changed at this point, as you outlined in the meeting. Just hit on the bill that passed, and what that has enabled the city of Hagerstown to embark on at this point, in terms of getting rid of some of this blight and dealing with some of these properties.
Like you said, Wes, the, there was a bill that was passed by the General Assembly this past year that went into effect on June 1 of 2023 here. It gives the local governing authority, whether or not it be a local municipality or a county, to either pick up a property that was maybe sold at a tax sale, but they, they started to file the right of foreclosure process, but never followed through on it. So it gives the local governing authority the opportunity to pick up that foreclosure filing, so you don't have those zombie properties, as they generally refer to as, where a process will start up and never completed. And then also gave the local governing authority the ability to withhold properties from tax sale if they were deemed blighted and vacant and needed demolished. So the city chose the latter part of withholding some properties from the tax sale, and there were six parcels, five properties, to withhold from the tax sale, so we can move forward with the process to eliminate the blight in the community by acquiring this tax sale certificate, acquiring the property to demolish them, to eliminate the blight.
And as far as that legislation is concerned, you said, you know, obviously, the city decided on the second option, so to speak, within there. But i- if the city were to file a motion with a court and do all of those things, there in the first part, to request a certificate of sale to be assigned to the governing body, if the holder of the certificate of sale forfeits rights to acquire the certificate of sale, how long do you think that something like that might take? I mean, do we have any idea how long that might? Because one thing we're trying to do, we're trying to get to the point where we eliminate this blight, as you said. I mean, it's been around too long. You outlined in the meeting, I mean, we're talking about properties 11, 12, 13 years, who have been, you know, those properties have been in a state where there's absolutely nothing that can be done. There's no value to that property. So just kind of a guess on your part of how long it might take to get through that part of this process, should the city go that route?
So with anything with a tax sale certificate, once it is acquired by anyone, whether it be a private party or a local jurisdiction, it's six months and a day before we can actually, once we acquire the tax certificate, before we can actually file the right of foreclosure, right to redeem the property. So we already have six months in the process right now. Although we talked about some of the legislation to be able to help along the process, it's given us more of the ability to acquire the tax certificates, but we still have to follow the state law process of acquisition of the property. So there's going to be a six-month and a day time period, once we acquire the certificate, to even acquire the property, to demolish it, or whatever else, because we have to make the current owner known that the city has acquired this tax certificate. And we are still looking to have the back taxes paid to us. So there is significant taxes against these properties that we're going to want payment back for. And if the owner can't make those payments, which if they haven't, as you mentioned, for 13, 12, 11 years, then the most likely, they're not going to move forward with that payment back to the city. So then we're going to try to find that end user that will be able to get the property back on the tax rolls. Because if anything with these properties, whether or not it's the, the six parcels that we're looking to acquire through the new tax legislation, or the 19 parcels that were not sold at a tax sale, they're not paying taxes as is. So whether or not the city owns it for, for being a tax-exempt property, or the current owner still owns it, no one's paying taxes on these properties. The city's ultimate goal is, is to get them back on the tax rolls, so then we have them contributing, and they're not using taxpayers' dollars right now, because whether or not they're the six parcels we withheld, or the 19 that we are looking to acquire, the city is still maintaining these properties. We are using taxpayers' dollars at, at three to five times a year to mow the properties or to clear junk off of them, costing the tax, costing the citizens a couple hundred dollars each time. So we are really spending a lot of taxpayers' dollars just to maintain these properties that the owners have basically walked away from.
And boy, that really grinds the gears of those who pay their taxes faithfully, as they should, because, again, we're really underwriting all of that. I mean, when you look at those six parcels that you talked about, it's almost $250,000 in taxes due to the city alone. That's not adding in what's due to the county and the state. So that is just a ridiculous number. One of the things that I look at here, there are four categories of eligible properties for repurposing. Can you hit on those for us?
Right. So through the Chapter 224 that was passed by the city, that there are different levels. So the one is vacant land that's undevelopable. Undevelopable land is basically ones that don't meet any kind of zoning requirements, or they don't even have any road frontage. For there to be a structure on it, there needs to be a street. Sometimes we have these parcels that are for paper alleys, that people just, it just was a parcel of land that was subdivided decades ago, that never got developed, and it just sits there. Or they are having alley access, which there can be no new development for alley access homes. So we have some parcels that were off of alleys that just can't be developed. Then we have vacant land that is developable. So there may be some vacant land that it meets zoning requirements to actually be redeveloped for a land. So that is one of them. Then, and those are the two that I know offhand. I'm looking at my memo off that one, Wes, to know for sure. So then we have the structure that it's in need of rehabilitation. So the parcel that is, basically, it's a structure, we're not going after these right now. These, these last two, the first two are the ones that we're, we're looking to address. The next two, we didn't go with any. Those were 11 parcels that had structures on them. But at this time, the vacant land was ones that we felt were the ones that were, the city could move the easiest with it. We don't really have anyone dedicated to this process, so it is some committees that would have to get together to try to review those for whether or not CNS process, or whatever they would be. But for the ones with structures, they would either be ones that need rehabilitated, or the ones that require demolition through those. The ones that require demolition, though, that's the fifth, or the fourth category of it, those were the six parcels that we withheld, so that we could try to move forward on just demolishing those. So it's kind of part of this program, but not part of the program.
And one of the things I heard you say when you presented to Mayor and Council was about the vacant lots that are out there, that exist, that nobody's paying taxes on now. So my question to you is, when you think about demolishing some of these structures that are on these properties, and certainly they're unsalvageable at this point, but what about creating more vacant lots? I mean, it's, it's a difficult proposition. How do you balance that?
Right. So one of the challenges that we have now is, is that some of these vacant lots that, that we have, the 19 that are out there, that majority of them were structures that were structurally failing. And the city did step in and demolish those properties, because the structure was failing, it was unsafe. But the challenge is, the city doesn't own the parcel. The owners sometimes feel that the city has acquired the property, because we demolished the property, but the city did not acquire the property. It's still in their hands, as the tax bill from us every year, get the notification that it's going to go to tax sale, to get notices to mow their property or maintain it. But they always feel that the city does not, that the city owns the property. So there creates a hurdle where the city doesn't own the property, the private individual still owns the property, they don't do anything with it. The city keeps on mowing the property, maintaining it, and then it just sends in this limbo state of just, the taxes just keep on getting higher and higher on a property. So it's trying to, to curb that. The city, go ahead and acquire the property, so that we have that parcel of land, and then we find that end user for the, the property. Recently, the city has done... Recently, the city has done a great job on, on moving parcels and structures off of city ownership and into private individuals, and that's the goal with this, too, is that we shown success with that, trying to get these into hands of people that can actually do something with it. Whether or not it just be absorbed into a contiguous property, which, if there's those that are out there, they're listening, it doesn't increase your tax assessed value. We've already worked with, asked that on that one, so if you are one that's a recipient that says, this is undevelopable land, you can just absorb it into your property, you just absorb it into it, your taxes aren't going to go up, and then you just maintain the land, and your land grew a little bit bigger. The city would work through the process of removing those lot lines, and then you would just have just a bigger parcel of land. And granted, you might have to mow it, but you don't have to have to complain to the city every couple of weeks to have someone else mow it.
Right, right. You have some control over it, you're not penalized for taking on that property at the same time, and it seems like, that, that's certainly a bit of a, of a win-win. I, I, I think when I, when I look at this, I, I guess, the other question I have, and I, I know you addressed it a little bit earlier, but maybe we could go into it just a little bit deeper, is that people often look at structures on a property, and they say, man, if, if the city demolishes this, then, you know, you talk about getting it back on the tax roll, now all of a sudden, it's just a, a vacant parcel. But at the same time, you've made that parcel better by removing that structure, but it is a struggle to get it back on the tax roll, because then who wants to acquire that? And I think the, I, I've heard this so many times over the years, you know, the, the city doesn't want to be in the real estate business. That's not part of what the city wants to do, but at the same time, there are many other extenuating circumstances around that, and it seems that, in trying to deal with these properties, expedite this process, make neighborhoods, you know, look better, make them safer, all of those things, that's almost where the city has to land on this, and then getting that end user is just the most difficult part. I mean, so, I, I think what you were discussing earlier with Mayor and Council was going to the competitive negotiated sale process. So, essentially, if, and, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but if the city is able to acquire a property, then it would go to the Department of Community and Economic Development to go on the CNS list, and that's how it would sort of be marketed or put out there for the public then to have a chance at acquiring it?
Correct. Yes. You are right, and so if it's a developable lot, then, then we would put it through the CNS process to get a, you know, a, a property owner that is going to most likely develop the land, because it is vacant lots, so develop the land to move forward on it. There are visions for each of the lots that are out there, so some are ones that are going to just have to be absorbed by the neighboring properties, because they're not able to be developed on, but there are ones that there could be development on for those, and it would get some infill on some lots that, that we have demolished years ago.
What are the, what are the next steps, let, let's say, for instance, with, with the six parcels that have been identified? I, I know you kind of laid that out earlier, but just kind of take us through that process as a refresher of where we stand there, now that we've been able to make progress to this point, at least?
Right. So, there are funding sources. So one of the things everyone might be sent back for those six parcels, if we got to demolish them, well, if we're demolishing them already, and we have the funds, we're going to use taxpayer dollars for that. Well, fortunately enough, we actually have some funds available that are not actually taxpayer dollars as far as city goes. There are ARPA funds that are available for that. We also were the recipient of a grant from David Trone, from Congressman Trone, on that aspect of things, and we have some community legacy funds as well, that's through the state, that we can use to actually demolish these properties. So, once we acquire the property, they're not funding sources coming from city taxpayer dollars, they're coming from other, I guess, taxpayer dollars, but coming through different means and different channels, that aren't specific to take away from any city projects, that they would be through federal, state funds that would be available to us. The next step in the process would be working with the Counter Treasurer's Office and acquiring the properties. We are working through ways to see if the county can't waive their portions of the taxes that are due, and then also waiving the city taxes portions that are due. So we lower the acquisition costs through the Treasurer's Office to the city, so that we would only have to pay state taxes due, so that it wouldn't be that much of an, of an impact on any type of grain funding that we might have to acquire these. So then we have funding sources available then for more demolition of the properties, because demolition will cost a couple tens of thousands of dollars to demolish these properties, so using those funding sources more for what they're available for, to eliminate the blight in the community. Once we would get everything acquired through the tax sale process, that we would be the recipient of the tax certificate, then the city would still have to go through the whole tax sale process, as far as once, six months of, of ownership of the tax certificate, going through the courts and filing all the right paperwork to actually have a judge, you know, deeming that the city can acquire the property. So there's still that day in court for the owner of the property, that they would be made aware, that they could show up and, and say, you know, I still want to own this property, so we're not just seizing properties from people's hands, it's not an eminent domain type situation, there's a whole public notice, public process, and through the court system to obtain the property.
Right. And, and I think, too, you know, the, some people think, oh, my gosh, well, this is the government overstepping its bounds, oh, man, they're going to be putting people out of their homes, they're going to pick and choose what they want to do. That's not what this is at all, right?
Right. No, these properties have been vacant for years, and part of the process with the state legislation is, the property had to be vacant. So, the property is vacant, they've been vacant for years. One of the properties on Pennsylvania Avenue, when I talked to a neighbor out there, when I was taking photos of the place, they informed me they've lived there over fifty years, and it's been vacant for all the time that they've lived there. So, some of these properties have been vacant for, for multiple decades, and so it's not anything that's, that's putting anyone out. These properties have been vacant, that unfortunately, they're attracted to nefarious activities, and it's just trying to, to get them into better hands, that it can be developed for, for other purposes.
And, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you have any sense of when we might start seeing some movement on this? I know you outlined the steps that have to happen, but just, I mean, even beyond that, should it get through all of those channels, where do you think we'll be that we'll start seeing some of this take place?
So, you know, as we can kind of say, on the, on the best parameter stuff, six months, we of course have to wait once we acquire the tax certificate. Once we file in court, we have to get our court date, which will probably take three to four months on that level. So, in all honesty, and then, you know, putting out the, the demos for any type of bid, or whether or not it's for a general demolition contract for the city being a contractor, or whether or not it's putting each one out individually, that you have that whole bid process. So I would like to say, within a year, you would see probably the lots being available for sale through the city's CNS process, and that's on the optimistic, short-range time period.
So we would actually be back to another tax sale by that point in time?
Probably.
Wow.
But, and, and hopefully, we would have those. Now, some of those that were undevelopable lands, we might be able to move a little bit quicker, but in all honesty, I think a year is the timeframe for everything on this, that if anyone was listening or paying attention to these types of process, we're looking at, at a year to actually see movement on the properties.
Yeah. Well, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but it's still a ways off in the distance, as Paul outlines, but we're, we're making progress, and that's the good news with the legislation and all of that, really opening the door for all of this to happen. So again, you got to go through the channels, that takes time, but, you know, continue to work on it, and I know that's frustrating sometimes for people, you know, I know Council Member Bruci says it all the time, that the wheels of government move slowly, and I think with something like this, where we really like to expedite the process, again, there are certain channels that you just have to follow those guidelines, those parameters, we'll get there. Paul, thanks for all of your information, always great to talk to you, and much appreciated.
All right, thank you.
And thanks to all of you for watching, certainly appreciate you tuning in. See you next time. For now, that's a wrap.